We have to stay here late to deal with the PUD.
All right. I'd like to, all right, here we go, the recording started. Thank you, apologize for the delay so we can have a quick break in between the two meetings. I'd like to call to order the Sioux Township Planning Commission regular meeting of November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two at eight oh nine. And if it stands for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Secretary Eric Chang, will you do the roll call?
Okay, Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Shara.
Here.
Commissioner Hyde.
Here.
Commissioner Human.
Present.
Commissioner Chang, here, Commissioner Culbertson.
Here. Yeah, of course, all right, we'll move along to the adoption of the agenda, is there someone that wants to propose revision to the agenda, Commissioner Hyde?
I would propose that we move the new business item nine one on the salt barn proposal up to precede the unfinished business talking about the PUD.
Okay, is there support?
Sir.
Supported by Commissioner Human, any further discussion? All those in favor of the agenda change, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Okay. Public comment. We do not have a public hearing tonight, so this is the sole opportunity for the public to address the planning commission. And those wishing to address the planning commission on any matter should come forward now, we'll start with those that are present in the room and then move to those online. And if you could keep your oral comments to three minutes, except for as well as person of a group. And those who are the applicant, you'll be able to do a presentation when your project comes forward. Anyone present in the room would like to address the planning commission? Who's not an applicant? Okay, anyone online?
Yes. We have Rob Pattinson, so Rob, you now have the floor.
Rob Pattinson, Sioux Township, would just like to ask the planning commission to make sure as you're discussing the salt barn tonight, this is actually the second salt dome that's on that site, the first salt dome leaked and damaged the wells of the Pauls next door to us and the Smiths or next door to, next door to us as well. And so it's critical that the drainage and foundation issues for this salt barn be able to handle any runoff so that it doesn't leak into our wells. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up. I believe, this is John Boyd, but I think it's Pam Boyd, so Pam Boyd, do you now have?
Thank you, I keep trying to log out of my husband's account and it's not working tonight, my apologies. A matter of housekeeping, you may be bringing this up later, Jan, but is there a planning commission meeting the Monday after Thanksgiving? That's my only question, thank you so much.
Not if I could help it.
Yeah.
Next gentleman is Kathleen Brandt, Ms. Brandt, do you have a floor?
Hi, Kathleen Brandt, Sioux resident, I saw Mr. Luan passing out documents, that's something that's not included in the packet tonight.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, the only thing that he was passing out, we have a meeting form that we turn in and it just, the secretary fills it out with, you know, the motion, who attended, it's the basic, yeah, that's what it was. And usually it's here for us to write and it wasn't here for us, so, thanks.
Okay, thanks, I just had that question.
You bet.
Another, another comment, I wasn't done yet. Another comment. I made a recommendation to one, the planning commission about language for the PUD that would limit the number of meetings that a developer can have with our planning consultant. I had a conversation with Mr. Luan about this topic that I expressed concern that a developer currently has unlimited access to our planning consultant. Number one, the township doesn't get renumerated for that, and number two, it's an unfair influence on the entire process. Mr. Luan did not agree with me. He actually suggested that that's a fair process, that citizens can come and talk to him as much as they want and the developers can come and talk to them as much as he wanted. And I made it, made the point that I didn't think that was a fair comparison because citizens, if they have a project, they're not going to be asking that kind of questions and they're not asking for unlimited access. So I made their recommendation that you put some boundaries in the language for how many times can a developer come and ask for feedback. I made a recommendation to the Board of Trustees that they tighten up some policies regarding the fees that are charged because we see, and I made a direct relationship at the last board meeting to a developer that was asking for an extension of their permit. And I pointed out that that developer had come to the planning commission three times, they had come to the Board of Trustees three times, I don't know how many times they consulted with our planning consultant, but we were not capturing fees for that. And I made a strong recommendation to them that they look at the fees again. So this is in line with my recommendation is, it would be very nice if you put some language in that bounded that, because the township is losing money on that venture, thank you.
Thank you. One else?
Yes. Ryan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Bob, good evening, everybody. Just noticed that you're discussing the PUD language again this evening, I would encourage you, if you haven't already considered this, as part of our work on the Forest Services Commission, we've looked at potentially where there's more usage or above standard usage of our fire department in the community, obviously there's, you know, people that have emergencies from time to time in a residential or a business setting, but if someone is to use our emergency services hundreds of times a year to a given property or project, it's something that we should consider from potentially especially the PUD language where you have considerably more leeway and discretion. I would encourage you to incorporate something into that so we can help support our fire services and other essential services for those people that are projects that may use quite a bit above their standard share of resources, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
There are no more.
Okay. I'll entertain a moment.
Move to close public comment.
Moved by Commissioner Moore and supported by Commissioner Hyde, that we close public comment. Any further discussion? All those in favor, you say aye. Any opposed? All right, we'll close public comment at eight nineteen. Okay. Communications and correspondence, there was some posted. Anything in addition to the correspondence that was posted? All right. We have no public hearings, so we'll move to SP number twenty-two oh one four, the Washtenaw County Road Commission salt barn. Typically, come on forward, anyone that would like representing the applicant and typically we get a presentation here from our consultants and ask questions and, and then possible action.
Wonderful, well, thank you for having us tonight, my name is Cheryl Sittle, I'm the Managing Director of the Washtenaw County Road Commission, thank you for having us on your agenda. We're going to make this very simple for you tonight, I do have a team of both staff and consultants with me, but essentially we're asking for approval of a new site, our new salt barn, we have a current salt dome which was built in the nineteen eighties, it is quite deteriorated, we, it's at the end of its service life, so we've gotten our money's worth out of it, but it is time to build a new modern salt storage facility so that we can continue our essential winter maintenance operations, so I believe that we have a full application in the packet. We've worked very closely with your consulting staff, appreciated the comments and the feedback that we received from them, and I believe that we've answered that in the packet. But I'd be happy to answer any questions or I can certainly bring members of my team forward to answer any specific questions that you might have.
Yeah, Commissioner Moore.
So just piggyback, piggybacking on one of our residents that spoke about the leakage from the dome salt reserve, have you guys considered that or planned for that?
We have, Marty, if you'd like to come.
Evidently not, but we do have them in our packet, so.
So the new salt barn will replace the old dome, the old dome will be removed and the existing foundation wall will remain so it can be used to house like material stockpile like gravel or sand and contain that within an area. The new salt barn will be fully compliant with Eagle requirements for handling of salt that requires it to be loaded and unloaded undercover, so the salt will be covered, the four slopes internally, so even if any rainwater or anything happened to get into the salt barn, it fully contains any of that material or liquid inside. The brine tanks now will be double wall brine tanks, which are again required for containment purposes and they will be fitted with leak detection, so if there happened to become a leak within that brine tank system, then they would, the road commission would get a notification, so I think it's going to be a good improvement for them operationally, much more efficient than working out of a dome, they'll be able to drive through the plow trucks and load them inside and then when the salt trucks come to load the barn, they can back in and load into our, dump their loads inside. And the, the salt barn will actually be a few feet shorter or lower than the dome, so it won't be as tall.
So I, I've not learned enough to inquire about the specifics that you just mentioned, I just wanted to make sure that your plans include, I don't know what it takes to do that, but that, because you know, I suppose there's some merit to getting an alarm that says, yeah, we got a leak, but if I'm a person and you're leaking it in my aquifer, I would be upset about that, so I just wanted to put that out there for you to consider because I'd be concerned about that as well.
We would be, not only would we have the notifications in place, we would be containing if there was any type of a leak or spillage.
The tanks are inside the salt barn now instead of, if you notice out right now, they're outside in a containment pit, so where those will be removed and the new tanks will be inside the salt barn, so leaks will be within the salt barn, if, if something.
The flooring is cement inside the salt barn?
It's cement, yes.
Yeah, before we heard from the residents, I was also wanting to know if the facilities had to have permits, I mean, you mentioned Eagle, so are there state requirements that you have to meet? For the construction?
Oh, that would be this local building code requirements, Michigan Building Code requirements.
For this particular type of operation?
For that building construction type, yes, we have to meet Michigan Building Code and current electrical codes and mechanical codes and for ventilation.
For salt containment.
For salt containment, Eagle has a protocol that all road commissions must handle salt by. And we are, they will be compliant with that.
So there are permits or requirements, not permits?
No permit, just requirements.
They don't need inspections, it's up to us to.
Well, we have had, we have had Eagle come out and do inspections on our site more as part of our MS four permit and certainly they would take a look at any of our facilities, including this one with the new facility as part of that.
But that's okay, I mean, it's okay to ask, yeah, ask questions because, yeah, they weren't really presenting the whole picture.
I was wanting to know if there were issues with the existing facility and are there new practices that the new facility will have to meet that the old one didn't? That would be one question.
As far as design standards, I guess I'm trying to make sure we understand the question.
Yes.
Okay.
Design standards for containment of spills, because obviously we're dealing with something that you don't want to permeate through the ground to the groundwater.
So the operation of the old dome, loading of the trucks happened outside the dome. So you could get spillage when you're loading the plow trucks. I can't answer that question because I don't know, I don't witness the operation.
Are you aware of what the resident claimed?
No, I was not.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not aware of that, I'm not saying it didn't happen, I myself am not aware of what that resident is stating.
I do know there's groundwater contamination in the area, but I believe that's an industrial contamination from across the street. And we can, I think, the facilities director is, can look into that and report back to that.
Three hundred North Sea.
Again, I don't know exactly.
Across the street from you or residential home?
No. To the east, isn't it, Dennis?
Yeah, southeast.
Southeast, to the southeast.
You're on the freeway.
Yes.
Across the street, so that's probably three hundred North Sea, that's the industrial's area.
I'm aware of, and I have not seen any sort of reports, but I'm aware of through hearsay that there's been groundwater contamination and a plume over there, I'm not aware of any calcium chloride contamination.
From our site.
Correct, from the road commission site.
Good.
So the person who made that comment has his standards. Your Mr. Pattinson is the one who made that assertion.
I would not have an objection.
Yeah, I would be interested in hearing from him. Pattinson, you have the floor.
So our, our family moved here in nineteen seventy-six and the first salt dome was smaller than the current salt dome and it leaked and the Pauls who live at four ninety North Sea, their well was contaminated and the Smiths, the original farm at five twenty North Sea, their well was contaminated and they actually had to go on city water. And fortunately our well and the Conshews and the Shones didn't have that same issue, but that's.
What was it contaminated with?
It was the, it was the road salt, it was and, and if you look on the zoning maps, you'll see a little bump out for the Paul House on the corner of Stone Gate and Zee, the south corner of Stone Gate and Zee and then you'll see a little bump out for the original farmhouse and that's because they're on city water. And, and that's why they had to go on city water was because of the contamination and so they tore down the old salt dome and built the super duper salt dome and apparently that took care of the problem, but it seemed important to make everyone aware that was a problem in the past.
Thank you for.
Questions about whether they had to be permitted because they're never needed to be inspected and you have the assurance of an agency, you know, if we don't have that, are we looking at the construction drawings in order to see that that's done, is that going to be our responsibility?
That would, it's the county, the building permits are handled by Washtenaw County. So we, we only have those only.
Do we know that they have to meet the permits for containment, I mean, that's again, if somebody.
It's a protocol as opposed to a permitting process, so there's a little bit of gap.
Goosey goosey.
Maybe there would also help if, you said it's contained, are there any drains in it and where do the drains go if there are, or just describe that containment.
There are no drains within the salt barn, everything is self-contained.
So if rain gets in, which I heard mentioned, rainwater might get in, could you have sloping floors to bring it to the middle or whatever?
To the back.
To the back, and where does it go from there?
It sits in the building.
So when you get a puddle of water if it rains in?
Potentially. What they do is they mix that water because the, the salt like will attract humidity out of the air during the summer, so you end up with a little bit of water in the bottom of the pile anyways. So they mix that all back into the salt pile and it just gets absorbed and gets loaded into the truck and goes out on the road. But you want to keep all the moisture inside the salt barn.
And these practices are again, operational procedures that you've worked out over the years or are they requirements or what?
We're, yeah, we follow all best practices with respect to road commissions, we also have a contract to maintain the state trunk line system on behalf of the state of Michigan, so we're following all of their protocols and requirements and guidelines with respect to winter maintenance, including storage of materials. So we're following everything that we can within our industry.
What is our responsibility for approving a salt barn? If we don't see those practices laid out for us, does somebody doing it, that's all, that's where I was.
The accountability is with the organization, if there isn't.
Not with us.
Well, I mean, if there isn't any established. Yeah.
Vice herb, I hope that resident didn't have to pay to go to the city water.
Other questions about the?
You will, okay.
Yeah, okay, any other questions of the? Okay. Well, move to. Earl Iwar.
Just trying to understand.
It's complicated.
Thank you, everybody, I think I think some of these questions might be answered, but at least provide a little more information after our review and OHM's review take place, because I know OHM obviously reviewed the engineering part of this project. So just for those at home, again, this is for a replacement of the existing road commission salt dome. It is a almost nineteen thousand square foot facility located just south of where we're sitting here on zero five fifty-five North Sea Road. All of the road commission's property is zoned agricultural, A1. And the road commission is this type of use, it's also within the Jacks River Overly District and the road, the road commission use is longstanding use on this property, obviously. There are a couple of things that we tried to look at when we first reviewed this project while discussion, discussing this with the road commission and that is if this would be considered an essential facility and service, of course, keeping the roads safe in wintertime is very important and some allowances for essential facilities and services in our zoning ordinance as well as county facilities, but those both were not, as we did some exploration, just a little as a point of background, we was determined that this, this did not quite account for qualify as essential facility and service and it didn't quite count as a county exemption because that's for county buildings, not road commission buildings. So here we are in front of the planning commission for full blown site plan approval, but we did explore those avenues to determine if the applicant had to go through this process and we found out that they did in fact have to go through this process.
They did have to?
Did, yes, that's why we're here. As, as a point of reference, the building right next to us, just directly south of us, the county annex building, I don't know what you want to call that, that did not have to go through site plan approval, through site country, because county, county buildings own and operate, county are exempt from multiple zoning. Road commission buildings were not, as we determined, as we discovered. So we are, we are in front of you, Baptkins in front of you for, for this review. As you can see on page two of our review, there, there are some general informational items that are required, some dimensional issues, gross acreage, net acreage, dimensions of the buildings, so some, some kind of general informational stuff that really doesn't change the concept of this project, but some things that will have to be addressed and added to the site plan before this would, you know, be approved for construction. Those are the kinds of things that the planning commission can make a condition of approval if you so chose to do so and could move on and could easily be checked prior to issuance of any kind of bill for this project. With regard to area with tight setbacks, sometimes we also call these the bulk requirements, these are front side rear setbacks, that sort of thing. We know that some of this information, while we believe the applicant, we believe this is compliant, but the applicant's, what they're proposing is compliant, we some of that information just needs to be added, lock coverage, maximum floor area, now, while these are, those two particular items are not provided, I think we have to recognize that the road commission has almost a hundred acres out there, ninety-eight point eight acres and this salt dome is not going to fill them over their maximum lock coverage requirements, but it is information that should be added. So again, just kind of informational item, but I don't have concerns with that, just interested in that. With regard to natural resources, the current site is developed, if you've ever been out to this site, to the road commission site, there's an existing salt dome there. So it's not as if we have a site with significant woodlands, wetlands, steep slopes, they're simply not present here, I mean, this, this is in essence a road commission construction yard that they're taking out and putting in new salt. With regard to traffic impact, again, this is an existing construction yard for the road commission, there's an existing salt dome, we wouldn't anticipate additional traffic that would be noticeable for this, this is a function that currently exists here that we're simply trying to modernize an existing function on site. With regard to central facilities and services, I think this may address some of the concerns raised by the public and the planning commission with regard to stormwater detention management, and I know OHM is on the line here and we'll be able to address their review of how, how this project drains and what, what might be impacted by stormwater and all of those sorts of things. With regard to location, site arrangement, we have no issue, this is within the site, there are no setback issues, a very large property as mentioned before. With regard to parking loading, this site should not require any additional onsite parking, as we sometimes see with new facilities. As we sometimes see with new facilities. Again, site access and circulation, there is existing site access, truck circulation on site. Our department requested some hydro locations for their access. And it's our understanding that the applicant has trust in these concerns. Uh with regard to landscaping. Technically, since the applicant has to go through full blown site plan approval. Technically, they are also required to submit a full blown landscape. The. The um. Now, we can also use existing landscape material to meet those standards. Typically landscaping is required to screen thing, you know, screen things from residential neighbors. It's to uh you know, provide other other kinds of landscaping benefits and that sort of thing. We know that in this particular case, again, existing facility being replaced by a new facility, the road commission yard. We we point out that the planning commission may waive or modify any of the landscaping requirements. In fact, we may completely waive the requirement of a landscape. And in this particular case, I would suggest you consider that. Based on what the applicant's proposing and any benefits that additional landscaping might. Might. Or lack of benefit that landscaping may. Create on this site. So I would just, we've listed on page four, the two, the two items that. Planning commission should consider to determine if a landscaping, if landscaping. So I think that should be considered and perhaps discussed with the planning commission. Uh we know that applicant is proposing some new lighting on site. The lighting plan that was provided would indicate that lighting isn't going to reach much beyond. The salt dome itself, certainly not to the property lines. However, those illumination levels are not provided on light plan. So we need some some additional information on lighting. Detailed fixtures. So our concern with the fixtures is that they would be dark sky compliant. And be downward directed. We don't want the ball pack type fixtures that are just kind of. Broadcasting light sideways. Everything should be downward directed, shielded, screened. In our conversations with the road commission, they they are they they want to have those kinds of fixtures. So it's just a matter of them adding that to the site. Uh the project will require no new signage for the salt dome. And yeah, and did provide floor plans and elevations of the of the facility. We have really no comments about, you know, this is all built. Not the most interesting building in the world, but you know, necessary building. And um. We have seven items that have gone over to be addressed. Most of them are 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 informational items, dimensions on the site, and setbacks on the site plan. That provides some fixture details for the lights they're proposing. I don't think any signage is being proposed. The main the main issue that would have to be placed in a motion of the planning commission, if you so chose to do that. Would be to waive the requirement of a separate landscape plan. With that, we would need this up to the planning commission to. Determine that those items should be addressed to your satisfaction prior to this project moving on to the township board. I believe someone here is from OHM, but I have to. Leave I have to.
While you're doing that, the letter that was stated November fourth, did that address most of the issues in your report? That those things need to be put on the plan?
Yeah. Yes. And I need to verify those.
All right. Good evening. We recommended approval of the project in our letter from October sixth. Contingent on two minor comments being addressed. One of them was to add a brief stormwater narrative to the plans. The applicant has actually already provided that in your packet in the response letter. And then our second comment was regarding emergency vehicle accessibility. The fire department issued their letter after we issued ours, and since they didn't have any comments. That comment on our letter is essentially addressed and can be removed. Other than that, everything else looked good from the site plan perspective. As always, we included preliminary detailed engineering comments for the detailed engineering phase, but those. Don't impact our site plan recommendation.
This is the site plan phase and will we be seeing or will we need. Detailed drawings in the engineering plans before it goes to the. Board of trustees, but not coming back to us. So at that time, these comments, these. Findings from OHM would have to be incorporated. Before it goes to the board of trustees. Okay.
Yeah, we are we are processes set up, just to kind of remind everybody is that. A number of years ago, the planning commission elected to remove the detailed engineering portion of the review. From the planning commission and have that reviewed after planning commission approved. With the understanding that detailed engineering. Required a substantial change in the plan and we have to come back to the planning commission because the plan had changed. But the plan did not change and we're just looking at. Stormwater calks and the size of pipes and things like that. That's something that maybe the planning commission, at least the planning commission at the time. Wanted to not be terribly involved in, but those had to be addressed prior to the township.
In the review by OHM.
Yes. Yeah, and OHM does a full detailed engineer review as part of the township core. That goes in the township core packet too. And by the way, it doesn't go, doesn't get put placed on the township core agenda. Until the detailed engineering is accepted by OHM.
Commissioner Mar.
So tonight, we're being asked to approve a final site plan.
Site plan, we don't, we we we, yes, well, we just call it site plan. We don't call it preliminary or final.
When's when did we start doing that? Because we have preliminary and we have final. But you have. I'm sorry, did you?
Yeah, for PUD. We haven't done preliminary and final site plans for probably.
We only do those on PUDs?
Maybe for maybe twelve. It's pedal.
Language in the suggested motion calls it a final site plan.
Yeah, it should just say site.
If I have a question, with the stormwater management, um is is there a maintenance? To the stormwater system that's required, a maintenance plan?
Uh we didn't require one for this, just kind of due to the size of what's being proposed. And how they're capturing it.
Well, how are they capturing it?
They have a gravel proposed, like an apron around the building that will capture the first flush. And then it will sheet flow to the nearby detention pond. Which is a regional pond, so it's pretty large in size.
You're talking about external to the building water that would be captured by the ground.
Correct.
Right. Any other questions for Stacy? Other questions for the applicant? Um I have one question for you, and that's the the county has. Adopted the their carbon neutrality goal for twenty thirty for county operations. Um and I was just wondering how, you know, what you've done with this building to help meet that goal.
Well, we are, the road commission is a separate entity from the county at large. So we are not part of that, um the county facilities or a part of that specific goal.
So you'd be under the community goal that would be twenty thirty-five then?
Correct.
Okay, so by twenty thirty-five, yeah. And so we're just wondering, you know, what in the design of this building. You know, what you've done to, you know, promote or achieve that goal of carbon neutrality by twenty thirty-five?
Um I guess as far as building materials or LED fixtures, those types of things.
An all-electric building, uh that kind, yeah, yeah, whatever.
There is no gas to the building. It's all electric. It's all LED lighting. It all has occupancy sensors that turn the lights on and turn the lights off. And it turns the fans on, exhaust fans off, and turns the exhaust fans on. So it's. There's not a whole lot to the building, really. It's concrete and wood studs and metal siding and roofing. It's about all there is.
It's really, it's a glorified storage.
So it's is it, the temperature isn't tempered inside or is that, okay, so it's it's pretty simple.
Very simple.
So again, where we could put LED lighting in and, you know, and save money and. You know, that's what we did.
And um are there any, what kind of controls for the exterior lighting? Do you know yet? Is that a timer on a?
Occupancy sensor, or not occupancy sensor, yeah, photocell.
And we are removing actually two existing exterior lights. We have one near our brine tank and we have one on the salt dome itself, which will come down when we remove the dome, the outer structure.
So you you have lighting, you have electricity in the building. What's the source of that? Natural gas?
No, that will be coming from the existing main garage.
It's electric.
Oh, it's electric. Yes. Yeah.
Correct.
Right.
Utility provided.
Natural gas.
No gas.
You mean the generation of the?
Yeah, natural gas gives you creates electricity.
I don't know. I mean, how DT generates the power could have come from windows. I don't know.
So wouldn't that be a, I mean, doesn't that fit into your question, Jan, about? What the what this building is doing beneath the the carbon neutrality?
It would, then it's up to the the county to enter into a contract or sign up for lighting power or other renewable sources. Yeah, with there.
Well, they said they're not under the Washtenaw County. Goal, but they're under the community.
Goal, which is twenty thirty-five.
Right, so.
So your question is, are they anticipating any renewable power sources for their electric?
We are not. Sure.
So I know this sounds nuts. This might be a crazy question, but I mean, we deal with these issues. Why wouldn't you? Deal with that issue?
I guess I would like to to look at that issue when we look at our site plan in a in a larger scale. Again, this is a relatively small piece of our site. It really is just a storage facility. If we're looking at any larger scale improvements to it, I think that would be the time to to look at something like that.
So it's probably primary power to the site and then.
I don't even know if it's primary or secondary.
To the salt bar, the new salt bar? Oh, that would be.
Oh, no, I mean, it's primary to the site and then.
Right, it would be a primary voltage to the site, and then it gets stepped down and distributed through the through the site. I think that um. You know, you you just have to look at the return on investment and, you know, you know, we're going to get your biggest return on that as far as, you know, doing, looking at a sort of photovoltaic array or geothermal or. Something like that. It just, you've got to look at that investment.
On investment. We're we're in survival mode. I hear you though, but. So that's a that's a whole nother track compared to what we're dealing with in terms of net zero carbon.
We looked at a Michigan State Police facility and doing a photovoltaic array because it was part of our exercise on that project. And when the return on investment is close to forty years and you only get a twenty-year warranty on the panels and inverters. And, you know, the they degrade over time as far as power output, you got to kind of. Balance, you know, they're going to, you're not going to get your return on it before they quit working.
Yeah, what changes that financial picture now is with the Inflation Reduction Act. You uh public entities can get a direct pay in lieu of the tax credit. So it reduces that cost now by thirty percent and you can, there are other things. So anyway. As as you're looking at your facilities, that's something to 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 look at. All right. Commissioner Hyde.
I have a question for our plan. I heard them say that they were going to be using the old foundation of the salt dome. Is that allowed in this, in under. Agricultural zoning to have outdoor storage?
Well, it's it's something they have been doing for. You know, I don't know how decades.
So it's it's allowed in this?
Yeah, it would be allowed for.
Sounded like a new use for that part of the salt dome, so I just wanted to make sure.
It could be for that particular location, but it would be very difficult, if not impossible, to try to determine if they moved that from one other part of the site. Now they're just doing it here, you know, you'd have to research older photographs. I would say that they have been, this use of material storage has been going on at their own commission facility for decades.
Yeah, we've had exterior material storage on that site since the nineteen sixties when the site was built. And this would actually be an opportunity to contain those materials and actually have it be neater and more tidy and. More efficient for us to be able to utilize as well. And there's minimal screening because we'd be keeping that. Foundation wall in place, so it hopefully it actually improves things.
What kind of, the basic thing that we haven't really talked about is the landscape waiver. What sort, what would be the landscape requirement broadly of this type of?
There's there's probably very little landscaping requirement around the dome itself. Because the the typical landscape requirements for a commercial facility are. Greenbelt landscaping and that would be landscaping in their case along Z Road. There would be parking lot landscaping, which the parking, which the dome has no parking. There would be buffer landscaping between this and single family residential uses. Which there may be some single family uses on far northern edge of the property. That would be so far removed from the dome. It's not as if the dome is right. Next to single family home, so. Typical, those those are the typical big picture landscaping, greenbelt buffer along Z Road, parking lot landscaping. Buffering of residential properties. Foundation plantings, but there would be no requirement for foundation plantings. So some of the typical landscape requirements are would not be required on this site. So we'd be looking at greenbelt, which they already have a greenbelt along Z Road with trees. We do count existing materials, so if the applicant, if the planning commission wanted to, they could ask the applicant to quantify what they've already got out there along Z Road. And uh. That's uh, I mean, that those would be the real landscapes to handle.
So in in your opinion, they're probably meet the requirements of landscaping, but just have not compiled the documentation to to say states them? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they 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 either meet the standard or. If you look at the standards, they say the second one is the public benefit intended to be secured. Will exist with less than the required landscaping. I mean, there's already a building there. I mean, there's already a dome there. I, I, I don't know that any landscaping along the edge of the property, hundreds of feet away are going to do anything to improve aesthetics of the salt dome or even screen it properly from neighbors. If this was like being proposed 20 foot from the property line, 30 foot from the property line, yes, we would then probably want to see a heavy wall of evergreen trees being planted, maybe an fence. But even, even that would have limited effect, this is a 32-foot-high facility. Planting evergreen trees are typically about six feet, and so it would take many, many years for trees to screen something that's 32, 32 feet high. So I would, I would think that one, as you suggested, they would meet some of these standards currently with existing material for the benefit of actually installing some of this material with the extremely limited.
Any other questions?
You mentioned height. Are there any height restrictions that need apply here? Obviously, this has got to be as tall as it has to be in order to function.
And so it is, there, there is a height standard on page three of our report, Kobe mentioned the height. The height in this district is 35 feet and they're proposing a 32-foot. So they're just, they're just under the maximum height.
Just the nearest neighbor is actually the Holiday Inn Express.
So commissioners, any further concerns or entertain a motion?
So for site plan 2201 for Washtenaw County Road Commission Salt Barn, based upon the information received from the applicant reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds that the site plan 22014 meets the required standards in findings for site plan approval pursuant to section 3618 of the zoning ordinance and recommends approval. The files, the site plan is granted with the following conditions. That the concerns noted in the township planners' review dated 10/17/2022, specifically items 1 through 7 on page 5, be addressed prior to submission to the board of trustees. With the concerns noted in the township engineer's review dated 10/6/2022, be addressed. Specifically comments 1 through 9 before, it goes before the board of trustees. And I, and the planning commission proposes waiving any landscaping requirements in lieu of the natural growth already present.
And submission of a landscape plan, right?
In lieu of?
In lieu of. Yes, in lieu of a landscape plan. So I said waive landscaping requirements, we should say, waive, waive the requirement for landscaping plans.
And, and plan, yeah.
Yes.
So waiving, waiving the requirements for, waiving the landscape requirements and the plans.
Yes. That's what I.
Is there support for the vote? By Commissioner Hume? Any further discussion? Or call vote, please, Secretary Chang.
Okay, Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Hume?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharman?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang? Yes, Commissioner Culberson?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Going through the process with us.
Of course.
He was hearing his hands, so I'm telling you, if you're going to say it's up to you. It's a messenger.
Yeah.
It's fine. It's most fine.
Does the commission want to open public comment? Right. I don't see a consensus. Okay. Thank you, you're welcome to email us too. All right, so we had the PUD discussion.
Well, my notes, we've all, you've all been here, most of you, pretty long tonight. And I just wanted to put this back on the agenda. I don't have anything to do at this point. I want to put this back on the agenda just to kind of make sure that we're still thinking about it. And I have enough, pretty much what I wanted to do tonight, hopefully, is just to get through to the end of the PUD ordinance because I don't think we've ever actually gotten through to the end. We've talked about the qualification of a PUD, whether it should have sewer, whether there should have sewer and water, or should it? I have a lot of notes on it, so I can, I think I can modify the ordinance to address that. So I don't want to, I don't think we need to rehash those items. I also have a, a number of comments from the public and just those folks that have spoken during public comment. I have your comments as well, and I will try to incorporate those the best I can. And just so everyone knows that is in the audience, that ultimately, this, ultimately, there will be a public hearing. And so there will be a published public hearing where everyone can take a look at what we've come up with and provide comments. And we don't normally adopt that to public hearing, that public hearing is just that, is to get comments from the public and then make final adjustments and then bring it back to planning commission. So we'll try to do this, so I want, I'd like to kind of get past the first few pages that we were primarily speaking about in the last few meetings when we talked about this. And get to.
What page is the?
In the packet? I don't have the packet.
9.1 if you're on the agenda.
The page, I didn't, I downloaded.
Wasn't in it, it's only in the previous one.
Okay.
So I don't want to stop you with your presentation. I kind of wanted to, we've spent a lot of time talking about how to use a PUD, how to restrict a PUD or not restrict a PUD. I don't think any final vote was taken by the commissioners on that, am I correct? And is it your feeling, cheerperson Culberson, that, I mean, how will that be handled as, as part of the process?
Well, I think he summarized the direction in his memo and, you know.
The three different, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and, and so, well, and so he's going to take that feedback and update the language. So, and, so we'll have an ability to.
Well, how can he update that when we never voted on it?
Well, you guys, you, you guys will have a chance before we do.
Okay.
Public, before we put this in a public hearing, and, and it's pretty simple, like, you can, it's like a toggle back and forth. So you guys, once you get to that point, once I have this kind of rewritten, we can hit that, that is one of the specific things that you might want to do. And we'll have seven numbers.
Because we're, yeah, because tomorrow night, yeah, people should know that, yeah, that John Reiser is going to be nominated as the trustee's representative. So that'll, it, it'll be good to like have that discussion, I think, you know, because Jeff wasn't here before and with the new, another member.
And all this stuff.
All over again, yes, so not, let's not wait, catch it tonight.
Like, I'm exhausting myself on the job.
So I think we can, you know, he can update it, we can hash it one, you know, hopefully once.
Yeah, so again, and we don't even have to get into a lot of this tonight, but there are a few, a few points that I'd like to, a few things I'd like to point out. That we, you know, once we get past the kind of intent and, you know, where, where we're going to allow them, which is a huge issue, and I pointed that out, that it's a huge issue. There are some other items that we are proposing to change. So I want to start on page two, I think we talked about this a little bit, but with residential density. On page two of my June, actually, thanks, June 3rd draft.
August 7th, 22?
Yeah. Which, which did you?
That was just a?
That was a memo.
That was the memo.
Yeah, yeah, August 7th was a memo, and the actual language goes back, goes back to the summer, June 3rd. Because we never actually got through the ordinance.
So what section are you referring?
I'm on page two.
These pages are different than that.
But it's a page that should still say page two.
Oh, I see, okay.
Under residential density.
Okay.
Now, you remember, I just want to get your input again. You remember that we discussed possibility of increasing residential density from 25 to 30%, 15 to 20% if the applicant does certain things. And we added, we added some items, EV parking was one of them. Net zero energy-ready buildings was another. And then a minimum of 10% affordable housing as defined by housing, by the Federal Department of Housing or Development. So those are new, so the idea was that perhaps, and this is some, a concept that we should kind of, I would like to hear your input on, is should we be inputting or should we be increasing potential residential density in a PUD if we, if, if we get additional things from the developer? And some of those go into our discussion actually this evening at 6:30. And so I, I guess that's, that's a, you know, that's one of the big topics. Is, is do we increase it, do we have a density bonus? We talked a little bit about even eliminating a density bonus across that sewer service district. So if that would be the case, then this would kind of be adjusted, be adjusted. But the point is, do we want to allow some increased density if the developer does things that we really want them to do?
Like affordable house?
Yeah, that aren't normally required by this only. So.
Commissioner Hyde, do you want to?
Well, I'd like to see at some point that we have ordinance that mandate some of these items anyway, and then we wouldn't be giving bonuses for doing something we're going to mandate.
Yeah, I think the EV charging for sure needs to be.
Not made of bonus, but made of actual requirement. And it wouldn't necessarily be in a PUD.
It would be everywhere.
It would be separate from that and it would cover everything, is what you're saying. So that, that, I would say we wouldn't even need it in here, we've got to do it.
We got to do what?
The EV charging, make it universal, not just in a PUD.
Give them a bonus. Just say you got to do it, but we wouldn't say it in here. That would just be the parking section.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
That's my thoughts. And it may apply to the others too.
We had this conversation last time we had a discussion. If you just kind of direct your attention to number 81, where it says that not to exceed, the dwelling units shall not exceed the number of dwelling units permitted in the underlying zoning districts or in the master plan. And I remember saying we should be consistent, there shouldn't be, it's either the master plan or the zoning district, but not or, why would we do, why would we have that written like that?
Because the master plan is what, because a reason, a PUD is a rezoning, right? And so one of the main considerations for zoning is what does the master plan call for it to be?
Okay.
So it would be similar to someone requesting a rezoning to say R1 and say the master plan called for medium-density residential, which is the designation that allows R1 zoning.
Yeah.
So that's the reason.
So what, but, so we get a, a problem with zoning districts saying something different than our master plan.
Yes, sometimes.
So that's something we need to clean up.
Well, the, well, the purpose of the master plan is to look at areas where your, you would densify, say, in the Jackson Row corridor. The, the issue that we have perhaps with this master plan is outside of the water sewer district where if we don't have any density bonuses, then we wouldn't get into increasing densities outside because a PUD would provide the density bonus.
Now, I, I, so this, in a, in a planning and zoning sense, this language makes perfect sense.
The language about?
Yeah.
Either or?
Yes, it makes perfect sense. However, I have also seen ordinances that simply say the zoning ordinance. And so what a developer does in most cases is then they would do a rezoning first and then apply for a PUD. So they would, so let's say something is planned for one acre, for example, and it's zoned ag. They would, under this provision, it recognizes the master plan, just like a rezoning. What, PUD is rezoning, so it recognizes the master plan, we're supposed to follow our master plan. Those are areas that we anticipate growth. Township has a master plan, something to be different than the zoning. If you wanted to take that out, you could just say zoning. But then what will happen is the developer will just have to go through one more step. They have to go through the zoning first and then they would apply for a master.
Which is or, it wouldn't be the planning commission that approved the zoning, it would be zoning or?
No, 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 sorry.
No, it's the planning commission and then trustees, right, yeah, it isn't a variance, it's a change in zone.
It just feels like very confusing to me to leave that in there. I'll take a look in there, I'll take a look at the differences. Because the master plan is pretty more, like, it even gets into how many units and stuff.
Yeah, it's a range, and the other thing to keep in mind is with a PUD, you don't have to agree to go to the, the full range. You know, when it's a by right development, you know, we don't have that judgment. But with a PUD, you actually have that judgment to negotiate the, the density. So it isn't like, of, of course, most developers will push to that higher range of density, but the planning commission has the, has the leeway.
And they could always pull the application and go through the rezoning first. And in which case, then they could come back in the way they wanted.
Right, and make it, it could even come in as a by right.
Right, and that, and again, just being the messenger here, someone has their hand up. So I'm not sure if you want to.
So I guess, I'm concerned about the amount of density. So to answer your original question, which is that dealing with A1A?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yes. So it, I was gonna say, it doesn't sound like people are supportive of increasing the density, that's what I, that's my feeling, it doesn't feel like I'm getting it. Is that a proper feeling?
Except, okay, I, I'm gonna stick to the other end of it, is it's, it's important where that density increase happens. And this is what, where it's tied to eliminating the, the density bonus elsewhere, so that we can increase the density in the water sewer district. And, and that's a really important thing, one with the affordable housing, to increase the transportation, make it a viable public transit system and so forth. So I guess that's my goal is, would be to restrict where that can happen, and not have it happen, you know, elsewhere in the township, but in that specific area, which would be, which would be Liberty Wagner and the Jackson, and Jackson Road.
And we can't have any, so, uh, ordinance that says, well, this and that, and, you know, all these other scenarios. We have to kind of decide where we want these PUDs to be, cause by, by.
Or.
By, well, I guess there are other kinds too, and you talked about the historical PUDs for different reasons, but my experience with PUDs is they're big, okay? And then now we're saying we wanna make them even bigger to try to get them to do something else. Um, and it's not just density, because it's density, it's because with density comes a lot more development. And I talked about this, the Heritage Woods project along Baker Road. That, that neighborhood will change forever. Those roads will be widened, there'll be more traffic, now you got buses going down, and you're gonna lose the rural nature of that. Now, this is something different, if you say PUDs should be limited to Jackson Road, I'm just saying this for instance, I'm not trying to convince anybody, but, um, so I, I, I agree with the notion that where PUDs allow us to set cluster, say we want, you know, we want you to cluster and, and have leave open space, I understand all that, and I agree with it, it sounds like really smart planning. I just, my problem is, is that, you know, more and more density. Yeah, so, and, you know.
But I mean, the other thing we could do is not increase the, the percentage of bonus, but just increase the number of, the, the items that they need to do to get that bonus.
And what they are.
So there are two elements here, adding the affordable housing, adding the net zero piece, and.
You don't say net zero as being a separate ordinance also?
Um, I'm not sure we can do that, because that affects the, well, we'll see if we can do that. Um, it's debatable.
That one in full.
That, that takes some time.
Well, it, it, one of the reasons why that could take some time is, uh, I think the city of Ann Arbor may be test, uh, testing that it from a legal standpoint first. So the idea would be to.
To leave it as a bonus for now.
And then evolve it, evolve it into something, that's the thinking, right? And so we don't have to increase the density bonus from what we've got right now, if that's, you know, a concern. But the, I thought was adding those things with the affordable housing and the net zero being an important piece.
Oh, I agree.
Um, both for that, so.
Yeah, I, 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 you know, I hear, this is my two cents sitting here, I mean, I, I hear, uh, both sides of this, and I, I I'm, I'm getting convinced that the density bonus outside of the sewer service district probably is something we're not gonna pursue.
Right.
Um, but some sort of density bonus on the Jackson corridor, or areas where there's sewer and water to encourage, because that would encourage things like affordable housing, that would encourage things like diversity in housing type, um, or out in, add parts of the township where the minimum acreage is two and a half acres.
You heard him, have a bus route get to them, for instance.
It doesn't make sense.
Which is what we need.
So I'm, I'm just kind of thinking out loud, but that's, that's kind of where you're probably gonna see this next iteration of the ordinance, and then you can decide.
And we had a discussion about sewer and water versus just water, and I think that it needs to be both.
Oh.
I don't know if we've, and the reason I think that is that if we were to extend the main across the freeway, for instance, we wouldn't be extending the sewer as well, and up on, for instance, up on Dexter and Ann Arbor Road, we wouldn't want to have uh, bonuses granted there, because it's outside of where we go.
Yeah, I think, I think the sewer service area is a much better, uh, control.
Yeah.
Then, you know, water is under pressure, and as long as it's six feet underground and doesn't freeze, you can pretty much put it anywhere.
Yeah.
Where sewer is mostly gravity fed, and it's much more difficult to move outside the sewer service district, it's very expensive with pump stations.
So it's limited here.
Yeah, and so, um, and we have, we have serious capacity issues in sewer with the city of Ann Arbor. So, um, the sewer's, the tiny density of the sewer service district is much more strict, I think, than the water, water district. I mean, I don't know of any property inside our township that has had a problem getting water. That's not the problem, it's sewers the issue for high, high density development.
You said sewer is an issue to get to outside of our sewer dis- district, but you also said that, uh, Ann Arbor's having sewer capacity issues, did I hear that correctly?
No, we, I don't think, I don't know what Ann Arbor's, I did that, if I said it, it's not, we, we, um, our contract, the township has a, has a finite amount of capacity that we can send to the state of Ann Arbor.
By contract.
By contract.
Yeah, and that, and that also is, now Stacy's here, she can probably correct the process, I'm thinking wrong, but there's a finite quantity and a finite geographic area. So we have a sewer service boundary that we can't move without, uh, approval of not only township board, but the Ann Arbor City Council. So it's very difficult to move our sewer service district.
I think I was more concerned about if we were to focus development in our sewer service district, that we might be running up against this capacity.
There's always that issue.
Yeah, but that also, the contract can be negotiated probably easier than the boundary.
So that kind of brings up the sustainability issue, it's like, using more is not better. So, um, and some of the gist of the presentation this evening was to, to cut down on our use of things. Um, I'll just say this, you know, this isn't before us, but, you know, there's a, we have a car wash that's over on, um, Zee Road. They wanna put another similar car wash, gallons and gallons of water, of course, they have a recovery cover, but on Jackson and Baker. In, in terms of use of water, why would we do that? Why, why would we need not even, maybe a mile away from the one car wash, a whole nother big user of water?
But they're only gonna use it for a car, and the car can go one place or the other, it isn't like they're gonna use, they're gonna wash it at both places the same day.
Exactly.
That's not the issue, you're putting in another business that's using gallons and gallons and gallons of water.
It's a cultural problem, I mean, it's not a, people have to stop.
It's a sustainability problem, if we're using water like that, like that.
People not do what they want.
Well, I think, but our powers, our powers are a little limited when it does, of my right.
Yeah, exactly.
But, but, from a sustainable, you, I mean, I agree that there is, uh, I mean, there is an issue, this dynamic of growth, right? And if you don't grow, well, it's easier to pers-, you know, keep your open space and so forth. But I think the.
And your resources.
Is, the issue is, the, the projections and so forth for this area are that we are gonna continue to grow, and in fact, there's probably gonna be some climate migration coming to Michigan. And what are the areas that, you know, are people gonna wanna live in, right? So, the idea would be to somehow effectively focus that growth where we want it, otherwise, it's gonna be much more difficult, we're gonna have, uh, everybody can divide their land.
Yeah.
Right, it, yeah, I mean, from the state level, we can't stop that. But we can say, you know, we'd much rather focus our growth in, in this area.
Now, would you be saying that, would you be saying that same thing if we had severe drought conditions?
See, what's.
Taking this position that we're gonna have to, we're gonna have growth, whether or not we like it, we have to learn how to deal with it and plan for it. Um, I mean, we're very lucky in Michigan, because we're not seeing the harsh climate change conditions. And I have no idea where it's gonna go in the future, but I'll let it, I'll leave it.
In answer to your question, I think that people should not build and farm in the desert, so, but we don't have that here. But that, that is a position that I would take if I was, the planning commission, none of them.
Okay.
All right, there, there's a couple other, I'm just gonna go, I gotta go raw.
You guys, all right.
You guys, not, not gonna stop.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, if you guys want to pick out any particular thing, so we talked about the density part, I think I have some direction there. Uh, on my page three of this, of this ordinance, under open space preservation, um, because that's sort of been ambiguous, what does that even mean? Um, we added a section about preserving mature trees and tree rows, um, on the site. So, that, you know, other than just saying open space, we tried to specifically talk about when we're reviewing, now, you gotta remember, this is the language we're supposed to be looking at when we're reviewing a PUD, so if we see this section that says, oh, our open space preservation, you know, the developer's saying, I'm preserving open space, and they're not really preserving open space, or little bits and pieces, or open space that isn't particularly valuable, but they wanna, but they wanna cut down all the trees, and and, you know, this is now, we add this section that says, oh, that we have, our ordinance says, you have to preserve mature trees and tree rows, you know, within the build portions of the site, recognize, to recognize that protecting existing trees offers more benefits, including carbon sequestration, water absorption, erosion, air-water, coal, electric, so I'm trying to be a little more specific, and that kind of mimics language that's in our, that we added to the master. So I'm just gonna keep going. Uh, we added language about, specific language about pathways and trails. This was sort of, uh, this language is not necessarily exact language, but it was, it was buried in some other parts of the master plan, or the PUD ordinance, excuse me. And so I just put this in one section about pathways and trails, uh, indicating when these are required, okay? Um, moving along, uh, under the concept review meeting, this is a critical meeting. Usually we, usually the concept review meeting, this is when the applicant first appears in front of some, kind of a staff level meeting with, uh, consultants, um, usually a member of the planning commission. Uh, we invite, you know, utilities director, we usually will invite your organization director, and so there's a whole bunch of us in a room on these projects. And sometimes the applicant doesn't necessarily have a good idea of what they're doing or what they're proposing. So we simply added, um, a, one of the requirement to, for, uh, having these concept review meetings, is that the applicant has to demonstrate in written and graphic form, how they qualify for PUD. Sometimes, you know, we get developers and they show, they sit down with us and they, they basically say, well, what do you think? And it's like, no, I want, we wanna know what you think, you know, it's not us to design this plan, you guys have to design the plan. So we're just trying to provide a little more depth in what they have to submit to us at that concept stage. There is, uh, moving along on page six of this, we get a public hearing. We, we put it, we put a time limit on a public hearing in indicating that a new preliminary PUD application along with a public hearing that meets the standard section shall be required um, if a preliminary PUD sits for more than six months. I've had this argument, believe it or not, with developers who said, we had our public hearing two years ago, why should we have another public hearing? Cause our ordinance didn't require a second public hearing, so technically, they were correct. If, if someone came in two years ago and had a public hearing on a PUD, and the whole planning commission changed, which has actually happened. And then they say, and then I, I'll say, well, we need a new public hearing, they push back and say, we already had our public hearing. So we've added something in there that requires if the, if a preliminary PUD sits for more than six months with no action, they have to have another public hearing. Because, you know, that, that, that just makes sense, and so we added that.
What is it saying, six months? I'm just trying to read.
I think it's above.
There is.
Under J?
No, it's under H seven.
Oh, y'all are probably reading something that's already been added.
H six, yeah, we, we added the, we added the section about requiring hours, just to be, just to be clear.
Yeah, you said it'd be.
The six-month part.
No invoice.
Yeah.
Oh, this is kind of a, an addition too. Um, I wonder what your, um, thoughts are the number of meetings that you should have with us developers.
Um, right now, it is unlimited, so the developer can meet with us as much as they believe they need. There is, now, some, some developers take that a little too far, and waste everybody's time. However, it's always best for a developer to come to the planning commission with a complete plan, rather than a terrible plan, and so that's partly the reason why they wanna meet. But I think there probably is some sense in capping it and then charging them every time they show up, I don't have an, would have a problem with that. Um, that might give them a little incentive to actually do some work, get it done the first time, instead of coming back over and over and over again. Um, but, uh, yeah, I mean, and I'll say this, um, my time as a consultant is probably the only one who's not being charged extra, because every time they meet with the engineer, there is a charge. The engineer has a flat, like, meeting fee, so the engineer, they have to pay the township for only a jump's time. But my time has always been thought of, since I have regular office hours here, it's almost thought of as just staff time, like, this is just, I'm just, in essence, almost part of the staff, and so that's just part of my normal course of duties, is to meet with developers and residents. However, um, it could be capped, certainly could be capped, and there could be a charge.
So it's more of a fee, fee structure, and I think if you do it more with a fee structure, then there's an incentive for, for, well, both parties, but then you're not using your time that could be working on ordinances, which we're gonna have a lot of. Um, it, it, people would be more, you know, efficient with your time.
Self-limining.
Yeah, yeah, so you wouldn't have to necessarily cap access, but you would, you know, there'd be an incentive to be efficient, um, with that, 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 those meetings. So I think that would be.
There's two sides of it, I mean.
Well, I think.
We wanna have the open communication, cause you wanna be able to sort of impact, and people are like outlandish in their ideas and stuff, or whatever, so. So that's why I was saying.
Yeah, I think what we can do though, uh, cause I think if, for instance, Ann Arbor has a requirement of, when there's a development of a certain size, right? I think it's by size, the developers have to have a, a meeting with the neighbors.
Uh, yes, that is correct, there's, yeah, there, there, we have large site plants, small site plants, they are required, there's a whole list, depending on the size, and or even a rezoning is gonna require, but even if it's any type of site plant, you still have to send out a mailing, a notification card, you don't have to hold a meeting, but you're gonna notify the neighbors within, you know, five hundred feet, but if it's a meeting, it's within a thousand, it's within a thousand feet. Yeah, depending on what's the scope of the project.
But there, yeah, but, yeah, for larger projects, that would have a larger impact, the requirement, and it's before they come for site plan approval. So that would be, I think, a good tool for the larger projects, where they're, they're, they're gonna be larger impacts to, to require a pre-meeting, um, with notification, you know, within a thousand feet, or whatever we wanted to do, but that could be, and that would be, even if it was a by right, if it was a certain size, it would still need to be.
Then the neighbors would feel like they had a voice. Then the neighbors would feel like they had a voice.
Prior to incoming to planning commission. And, and that makes sense to me, to do so.
Yeah, we certainly could look into that. You know, I, I think, I, I think, you know, you also have to mention part of my job here when I'm doing office hours is to, to a certain degree, intercept ideas that have no chance. And you would be, maybe you would, maybe you wouldn't be surprised at the developers and property owners I speak to that come to me with ideas that don't have a chance. And I try to tell them that they don't have a chance because they're wasting their time and money otherwise. And so there's a certain filter that occurs at the level here that I will try to tell people that, this is, this is ain't gonna fly inside township. But I will say that to many developers and they still wanna, you know, they have the right, everyone, I, I, I can't tell someone, no one can. We can't tell someone they can't apply. People have the right to apply. They own property or they have rights of property, they can apply PUD or zoning, site plan, special use.
CBA.
They simply have that right. And I do the best I can to dissuade people if I don't think there's any chance. However, uh, people have a right. And so a lot of times I hear comments from the audience that say things like, how did you have this? It's like, we can't not let, you know, I can't stop them from paying their money and taking their chances. But, um, I try as best I can. So, um, again, kinda getting off, off track a little bit, but, um, another big thing we added based on, uh, city or township attorney things. Input on page seven, township board has to have a public hearing. We had only been having public hearings at the planning commission level for PUDs. And, um, township attorney indicated that, I think there was some recent action that indicated that township board also had a public hearing. So they changed that, or what we're doing, although it's not in the PUDs, we have to, that just has to go with it because that's something that the attorneys ask us to do. And then one big thing that you'll see on page nine of our, of our ordinance language, that is a requirement. Now, we always talk about a development. The current ordinance, we've never, Scioto Township has never historically required development agreements. This is, we've always relied on the PUD plan itself and the minutes from the meeting and any conditions that the planning commission township workplace has. So we really relied on the actual physical plan. However, there is a, there's a, it's a custom, but there's a typical way of that, in other communities, that PUDs can finally approve. And that's not only with a plan, but with a written development agreement. Now, we've been asking for development agreements over the last few years. And we've been getting them from, and we can, cause a PUD, we can pretty much ask for it. You can ask for a lot of stuff at PUD that you can't ask for in just a site plan. And so we've been asking for development agreements and that is an agreement that lays out how legally the project's gonna go, you know, who's responsible for what. When's it gonna happen? It can be very specific. We had a very detailed development agreement for, uh, the project just south of Baker. One of the hair, the hair and issue of the.
The woods, something woods.
Where are you talking about?
One just south of Baker, Baker, Baker.
East of Baker. South of the south side.
What, next to Menards?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no. The, the big one we just approved last year.
Yeah, with, with the hair and the brewery.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We're all forgetting the name, but I'm sorry.
I thought that was next.
I should not, I should not be forgetting the name.
No, it's next to Tractor Supply.
That's what I'm saying. That's it.
However.
W what?
But we have a, uh, we have a really detailed development agreement that talks about things like contributions to fire department, contributions to trail systems, contributions to a sewer pump station. Now, that, that, in the past, that was all, that would all be outlined in the site plan, which is fine. But this is just another level. So this is something that should be in our PUD ordinance, it's kind of a technicality. The attorney also likes this to be in our PUD ordinance, so this is in the PUD ordinance, we're adding it. Then we have a list of things in here that should be included as part of. A is missing, uh, the word agreement after the second development. So say it again. So, uh, section thirty-six, two fifty-two, PUD development agreement, a, a PUD development agreement. I think the word agreement is missing there. Or maybe I don't have the same copy you guys with that. I'm on June third copy.
Yeah, that's the same one.
Thank you, Ray.
Yes. And, and although you don't have it, but you'll eventually get it. There is a sample PUD development agreement that I put together. That basically is a fill in the blank because people always, you know, we say, hey, we look at. Example. And so I, I have a sample that was taken out of a Michigan planning and zoning book, uh, that was recommended by some attorneys who are much smarter than me. I provided that to, to the township attorney and, um, I have not heard back how accepting he is of that development agreement language. But I, I do have that, so eventually you guys will see.
I think you shared that with us.
Yeah, it's gonna be a B and X B.
Yeah, it's gonna be. Other than that, those are the big changes. So as I mentioned, you know, last time in my last memo I gave you, you know, there's the basic issues which we've already hashed out, which I'll try to still give you the options of how to do that. Maybe I'll have like a choice A, choice B, but that's going to be like, you know, whatever would be allowed, that's the big one. Service district outside of the service, service district. Talk about density. Those are, those are the big issues. And I think again, between the public comments we've received, to the planning commission comments we've received, get you back to that. I just wanna make sure we got through the whole thing, cause I know we've never gotten through the whole thing.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay. And then just a, um, just a reminder that we do have a scheduled planning mission meeting on the twenty-eighth, which is the Monday after Thanksgiving, as long as we have quorum. Is anyone not planning on being here for that?
I would not be here.
Okay. Yeah, sure. Okay, all right.
I'm not planning on being here.
You're not planning on being here. Okay. Two. So, Bob, we will have a quorum issue if you're not able to attend.
As far as I know, I'll be here.
All right, so.
Geez.
Geez. Okay, so we're gonna, uh, move on to, um, our commission reports and, OHM, do you have any, anything to report out tonight?
We do not have anything to report.
Even me?
We have not had any.
Um, and, uh, the environmental task force did their report. And beyond that, I do not have another report. The other thing that we need to put on, um, there are some updates to our, um, our bylaws that we need to do, just to confirm form with current open meetings act stuff. Oh, yeah. Um, so we should put that on the list too. Um, okay, um, Board of Trustees, and sort of just talk about the.
Yeah, the only thing that comes to mind is that we have the, uh, new commissioner going to be appointed.
Um, zoning board of appeals, uh, we haven't met this month yet. No, no news. Uh, DDA?
Yes, we met earlier today.
Oh, great.
Yeah, it was good. Um, we did a, uh, we received an update on spark activity from, uh, in Scioto Township from Jennifer Homestead. Um, not, not actually a whole lot happening, uh, if my notes are correct. On that front, but there are some, uh, there's apparently a website that lists all of the IFTs, which are like tax breaks for, uh, for businesses, industrial, I forget the sense of, like new, new tech businesses that, uh, that, that she talked about. Also, the bus shelters, uh, start construction this week, possibly tomorrow. I did not bring up your, uh, the, sorry, the ESTF's, um, bicycle parking of bus shelter proposal. The opportunity did not arrive, but, um, they are meeting again on, uh, January, in January, I should say. And, um, that is when they're wanting their new project list for next year to do their funding. So I think that's, uh, where that should go. As you noted in the, in the, uh, bus shelter proposal, uh, it's too late to attach it to the bus shelter project as it is.
Okay, great. All right. Um, Road Commission Advisory Committee.
No, there's nothing to report.
LPC.
I missed one thing, sorry.
Oh, okay.
There was a question about, uh, insurance in there. The, uh, I guess the Scioto Township lawyer was encouraging the DDA to have its own insurance. And then they asked, uh, me if the planning commission have our own insurance. And I said I didn't know.
We're really assured. Yeah, we're under the, see, the DDA has their own, their, their legislated body.
Just like the township board.
Yeah.
I'm fairly certain you guys are covered.
Under the.
Yeah, under the township.
The DDA has a sep, they're kind of a separate, almost a separate entity in a way. Because they have, they derive their funding specifically from, um, the ta, you know, the tax piece. And their legislative is a, is a separate entity. So there may be something there too in that.
Yeah, they're worried about liability around the bus shelters.
But wouldn't that be?
I think he was the one suggesting that they get insurance.
Yeah, I think, I think the situation is different, you know, just from a, and, and they're doing capital projects, right? That's their job, right? They do capital projects. The, you know, a more appropriate one would be to ask the Ann Arbor DDA or someone like that, if they, you know, a similar organization.
Heard of it though.
Because for instance, Ann Arbor does, you know, they have the parking structures and all that. I bet you anything they have insurance. Cause they're, they're.
So what would be insured?
It would be liability, um.
Which I, or, I mean, slip and fall in the shelter.
Yeah. If you're, if you're an owner and you're, you've built something, you can get, you can get sued if there's an issue with what you've built.
There's shelters.
And they are technically, I guess.
Well, that's also a gray area because they're, they provide the funding for it, but, or, yes, but, um, AATA is the one who's gonna own it.
Oh, well then, so then they.
I was gonna say, the AATA.
If they own it, then I wouldn't worry about it, but.
They own shelters and they clean them. So why is the DEA spending money on them?
Well, I think that the DDA paid to have these shelters built for Scioto. That's my understanding.
So they, they built shelters for their service areas, but, okay.
Yeah, they're gonna maintain them.
Yeah, they're responsible.
Oh, they're gonna maintain the ones.
AATA will maintain the shelters.
But they're being built by the DEA, so, oh, that could be a real, um, you know, did you, was it a maintenance issue? Was it a construction issue? I don't really wanna get into that. Yeah, but it would be interesting to see. You could, that would be a, a, a thing to ask the DDA in Ann Arbor or, uh, I'm sure there's like a smaller DDA, um, somewhere that they could ask to. Um, right. Um, we're missing land preservation, aren't we? Jackie. Okay, um, TAP. Oh, I skipped Parks and Recs, Parks and Recs and here in River watershed.
So Parks and Rec.
Council, you don't have a report for that? Okay.
But on Parks and Rec, we, we're planning a crow's plan review meeting. And that would be jointly with TAP. And, uh, let's see what else. So that's gonna be scheduled, but it isn't scheduled yet. We're trying to figure out what the date would be. And then they're talking about the, again, combining parks and TAP committees into one. That hasn't been decided that I know yet. I'm assuming that the Board of Trustees is aware of this, but it hasn't come up before then officially. And then we had some discussion about the contract work that was done on Marshall Park. So that has to be resolved before they get paid, as.
Oh, I forgot. You're also Fire Services.
Oh, Fire Services Committee. We're, we're going, we're meeting, we've been meeting regularly on Wednesdays. We've been trying to lay out, the chief has been laying out needs and, uh, what's required to meet those needs in terms of personnel and, and facilities and vehicles. And when we get this all sorted out, what we're going to do is propose to the township board what we recommend, they put on a ballot. And so this is ultimate goal is to figure out what we wanna put on the board for them to decide to put it on a ballot.
To increase our taxes?
To increase our taxes. And, but the, the idea being that, um, there's offsets to that. There's insurance that everybody pays for their household, you know, and their property, that's, you know, property taxes. And some of that is based on the rating of the fire services. So in actuality, some of the increase that we will be paying would be offset by the increased capabilities of the fire services to, to respond in emergency. So therefore your taxes should go down. Now, it's lagging.
Why should my taxes go down?
Because the rating for our.
Your insurance would go down.
The rating of the fire services would, would, um, would be, it's hard to say.
I understand.
It gets better, but I think the number gets lower.
Because of the service of the fire.
Right. So if your services get better, your insurance should go down and offset the cost of paying for the increase in facilities and, and so.
That's such a political justification.
No, but it's a lagging.
We're getting us ready for it.
No.
You know, we're.
So all these things are being hashed out and.
That you can't tell me, I cannot believe that, that ten dollars or twenty dollars I'm saving is gonna pay for that increase in taxes, cause we're talking about some, we're talking about other stations, plural, other employees, lots of money and equipment. We're talking, we're getting big expansion.
The answer is, it's all going to be laid out for the public to view. And it's, and they are reviewing it right now. There are people from our community, Rob, Kathleen, all the people. And boy, these people are watching right now. These people are watching right now and seeing some of this, you could also review it, people will review it.
It's part of the cost of growth.
Yep. Yep, you get more people, you get more calls.
More developments.
There's a lot going on, a lot asked and considered.
All right, D.
One of the reasons I moved to Scioto Township, because of the-
I pretty much described, since we said combine the last couple of meetings. I would say we have another meeting December fourteenth, and there's a chance that we'll have a draft resolution at the next meeting to combine Parks and TAP, so.
All right, fire department.
All right, that sounds good, okay, minutes.
Operational budget, that's the first one.
And we have the ten twenty-four. And those just got, those were uploaded a little bit later.
Yeah, I didn't see them.
They were not in the original download.
Would I be able to see them if I went to the township website?
Yeah, that's how I downloaded it.
You can see them here if you want.
I'm happy.
Is it too little?
Yeah.
I'm not saying.
We're, we're still reviewing the minutes, right?
Yeah.
I've gotten lost in reviewing minutes. I, I have a possible correction.
Okay.
Or not even oriented, it's on page eight. The second full paragraph credited to Commissioner Moore as raising concerns regarding conditional use standards four and five.
Page eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was, it was me that cited conditional use standards four and five.
I did, too.
Okay.
But you can take my name off.
No, that's okay.
Well, do we wanna say Commissioner Moore and Commissioner Human?
Sure.
Okay.
The inordinate amount of traffic, that was definitely Commissioner Moore.
So we're just gonna say Commissioners Moore and Human raised.
So, um, there was a motion to approve the petition of Honey Creek Business Park. Excuse to vote, man. And it, oh, I see, I'm sorry, okay.
That.
I thought there was only three commissioners listed that voted.
On the second, next page, yeah.
It looks like it was gonna be the right one.
And it was presented to the board of trustees, I mean, in my report, we had differences of opinion.
And it has not, it's not on the agenda for the DDA.
No, just a heads up to that.
Okay. Any, any other corrections to the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes of October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, as amended.
Is there support? The support's by high. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any of those. The minutes are approved as-
Move to adjourn.
Sure, so fast, is there support? Okay. Moore and Human. Okay, all those in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned at ten oh five.